We will now call a common council meeting of October 3rd, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorik is excused. Alderman Ritz?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Gail?
Here.
Kuzakowski?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ken, you want to start us off?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, that will get us to the approval of minutes of September 19th, 2023. If everybody take a few moments and review them. When you are satisfied, there's no discussions, questions, omissions, or corrections, we'll entertain a motion.
Marshall will move to approve the minutes of September 19th, 2023.
Kuzakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Epstein.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item four is recognition, and so is good part of the council. This is a resolution of commendation to Greg Price. He is a retiring senior service worker of meters from the water department. This time I'm going to ask Mike Sullivan to come up and say a little bit on Greg's behalf.
Thank you. Greg's been with us for almost 17 years, a little over 16 years. Came in as a utility service worker and then got promoted into the senior service worker position in charge of meters and has really taken that position and developed it and ran with it. He is going to be missed. He is one of our authorities on meters for sure. All our relationships with Agrometer, our meter product, go through Greg and were... He went out a little unexpectedly due to an injury earlier and then chose to retire, but it's been kind of a leave us in a bit of a lurch trying to fill that hole. It's a large hole to fill, but we found a great person in house to do that. But this is to honor Greg. I mean, he's had an amazing career and really has had an impact.
Thank you, Mike. Also, anyone want to say anything on Greg's behalf? Well, just to add to Mike, I think 16 years says it all. I've been in this city as an older person and mayor for about 15 years and quite frankly, the one place we never ever really get a lot of complaints is the water department, particularly meter, and that affects every business and home here. And that's a reflection on the dedication Greg had. And as Mike said, he came up through the ranks and that's very common here in Oak Creek. And you're going to hear more about that in a presentation coming up very, very soon. So my sincere congratulations to Greg, his family. Want to thank you for everything you've done for the city on behalf of the common council, myself and all the residents of Oak Creek. We wish you a long and happy retirement. Yes. Oh, yeah, please. Boy, I'm really out of practice here. I skipped right over that. Go right forward, Catherine. Thank you, Ken.
Resolution number 12433-100323, resolution of commendation to Greg Price. Whereas Greg Price began his employment with the City of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility on February 12th, 2007 as a utility service worker and whereas Greg was promoted with... was promoted to senior service worker meters on November 12th, 2012. And whereas Greg achieved a certification as a DNR Municipal Water Operator in the Distribution and Groundwater Collapses. And whereas Greg was responsible for ensuring public health by helping to operate the distribution system to deliver award-winning water quality that far exceeded water quality regulations. And whereas Greg responded to emergency calls at any time of the day or night, including weekends and holidays for such things as assisting customers with water and sewer-related concerns, repairing water main breaks, or providing emergency service. And whereas Greg believed that the customers were always the top priority and treated them with the utmost courtesy and professionalism. And whereas on August 4th, 2023, Greg retired from his position as senior service worker meters after serving 16 years, seven months with the City of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the City of Oak Creek that for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Greg Price for his 16 years, seven months of dedicated service to the City of Oak Creek and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Greg Price and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Greg Price, passed and adopted this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Now it's appropriate to ask.
We'll make a motion to approve resolution number 12433-100323, resolution of commendation to Greg Price, retiring senior service worker meters.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Elder woman, Marshall? Aye. Gail?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Pardon me, Kirkowski. Ritz?
Aye.
Item five is mayoral proclamation recognizing white cane safety day, which will occur October 15th, 2023 this year. Catherine, would you please read that in?
Certainly. Mayoral proclamation, white cane safety day, October 15th, 2023. Whereas on October 6th, 1964, the United States Congress designated October 15th of each year is white cane safety day. And whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 109,000 Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids, such as a white cane or a service animal, to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas Wisconsin's white cane law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet of a pedestrian who is using a white cane or service animal. And whereas greater awareness of the white cane law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. And whereas communities implement many proven features to enhance the safety of all pedestrians, including sidewalks, accessible pedestrian signals, and curb ramps. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel Bekovich, mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 15th, 2023, is white cane safety day in Oak Creek and hereby also acknowledge the importance of pedestrian safety year-round, dated this third day of October, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone from council want to make a comment on White Cane Day? Typically, I make this mayoral proclamation every year. As Catherine Redner's proclamation, it affects at least 100,000 people in Wisconsin, but nationwide, it's hundreds of thousands. And if you've ever had a friend, relative, associate that's had vision issues, you'd understand the importance of this. I think at times we do take for granted everything we have, our senses, our faculties, and it's only right to take some time and recognize those that are impaired and do a reminder for the things that can enhance and make their lives better. We need no action on this as it is a mayoral proclamation. So just want to thank you for your time and attention to this and please be mindful of those that are afflicted with vision impairment. Now, new business. Item six is a presentation by Human Works Eight regarding our city values, discovery process, and our core organizational values. Sean or Tony?
I'm actually happy to introduce the Human Works Eight team. As part of our 2023 to 2027 strategic action plan, we have the core of establishing core organizational values and create a meaningful employer brand. As part of that, we wanted to refresh our core values and we were happy to partner with the Human Works Eight team to help establish really meaningful core values. So I'm pleased to present Sean Gullius, who is the founder of the Human Works Eight organization, and he is going to talk about the process that we used and the core values that we landed on.
Fantastic. Thank you, Tony. And Rebecca Swanson, a member of the team, is also here with me. And I will say it's a team effort because Andrew, Tony, Leslie, other people in this room were a part of what I'm going to be sharing today. I thought we'd start with sort of talking a little bit about the process and the foundational ways we look at values and why values are important. And then end with unveiling. It's one of the first times where people get to see where the team landed as far as the new values moving forward. First, I just want to say how honored I've been to work with the City of Oak Creek team members across all of the different elements of the city. It's been a great group, something that has really been a moving experience, hearing the stories and the ideas that have been shared. And I just want to say too, I am really grateful to be here tonight because I got to say the pledge of allegiance out loud with all of you. And you know, I haven't done that a lot recently, and that really meant something to me. So thanks for having me here today to do that. Where I want to start is why values? Well, we always say, what's the value of core values? I know you have some on the back of the wall, but there. But Andrew and the team reached out and said, Sean, we want to elevate them. We want to bring them to life in a different way and really show what the uniqueness of the City of Oak Creek is. And what values are? They really set an expectation for city employees, how they interact with everyone. They also differentiate what makes the City of Oak Creek different from any other city in Wisconsin or the world for that matter. And then finally, values should guide decision-making. All of you, everybody in the room here, has their own personal values that guide their decision-making. Core values for an organization or a city should guide what the city will and will not do. So what are great core values? Well, we believe that great core values need to be gutsy, the real authentic, what is the City of Oak Creek all about? We also believe they have to be unique. They can't be the same words that every other city in the world is using to describe what makes them special. And then finally, they have to be active, something you can do. A lot of organizations have one-word values that are a good professional word, but they really don't say what it means to be a part of the city or a City of Oak Creek. So that's what we were looking for. We didn't want them to be sort of aspirational, your values are alive here in the city now. We just wanted to sort of uncover them. And the way we did that is we had listening sessions. We had over nine conversations with over 100 city employees talking about what made the City of Oak Creek really special. When the City of Oak Creek gets at its best, what's happening? What are the underlying values to that? We then worked with Tony, with Leslie, with Andrew, coming up with language, using all the words that were said from the stories and from the conversation there and putting that some new language to it. We also then elevated from the words you see from behind me on the wall. So we didn't throw away those words because those are there, a part of the city history. But how do we elevate those or use stronger language to describe them? And then finally, what Tony, Andrew, and the rest of the team is going to do is how do you use the new value language and build and evolve that and integrate that across all of your people touchpoints? So every city employee interacts with it in their daily jobs and in the work that they do. And as I said, the team was just fantastic. I love how Scott's holding his name tag up on this one. I mean, he wanted to be known, I'm in this picture here. We, again, we talked to so many different people, over 100 different employees from across every sector of the city, library inspection, maintenance, the water utilities, you name it, they were present, fire, police. But again, everybody was there. We heard everything from the stinky fish story to the kids in the tornado story. We heard stories from the tragedy story to the city care story. So many stories were told about what made the City of Oak Creek really special and great and when how it rises to the challenges of the community. We listened and it's time to unveil what the results were. Everybody excited? At least one, I'm glad. Well, I was telling people when we do this, it's kind of emotional because what we're sharing are really the city employees' words. We didn't make anything up when we do values. We listen, author, and work with the words that are actually said in the session. So it's not a creative writing exercise. It's really just using the words and looking for themes and things that came out during the session. And where the organization landed was with five values, five new values moving forward. And I'm going to share the values and then talk a little bit about what each one means. And here they are, ready for the big reveal. Curtain goes up. The first one is champion positive outcome. What that means is respond to any and every challenge, seek solutions, and model leadership and resilience. The second value was set the path, honor our community and collectively write our story, look ahead to tomorrow. The third value was strive together, people and team first, build trust, collaborate and support with care and kindness. The fourth value, nurture knowledge, create an environment of endless learning, apply knowledge and gain new perspectives. And the fifth value, see the good, bring energy, fun, and balance to work and life, prioritize dignity, safety, and connection for all. That's where the city landed. Pretty powerful stuff if you ask me, but I'll ask you. So as you hear the values for the first time, what I would ask each of you to think about, you have a gut reaction and usually the gut reaction is how do those values align with my own personal values that we live by? So I would love any member of the council or anybody to sort of say, does one of those jump out at you and you say, Sean, gosh, that one, that speaks to me? I lived by that in my life. That sort of jumped out at me. I would love to get one or two sort of comments. Would anybody want to be brave? Thanks.
Since I raised my hand before.
You did, Jim, and I appreciate that. What one jumped out at you that you said?
Strive together. Teamwork.
Yeah. And you'll see the word teamwork back there, but strive together brings teamwork alive in a City of Oak Creek way that's different than just the word teamwork. And that's what really having very gutsy unique values are. Thanks for sharing. Does another one jump out at anybody else?
I'm a set the path person.
You are, Lisa.
I am.
Okay, yeah, that's a great one. And I think, you know, what's unique about that value? A lot of organizations don't have that community in writing the story. That's a very unique thing to a city organization team that way. So I'm glad you brought that one out.
I'm going to jump out there and the very first one, champion positive outcomes. Our staff is great at that. You know, they respond to any and every challenge and quite frankly, the general public never really knows about it. Whether you're in DPW, accounting, water, you name it, protective services, they're out there, 90% of their work probably never gets reported on and they're the ones that are satisfying the public.
We heard it, it's happening. Like I said, these words are from those different teams as far as what, when we're at our best in the city, this is what we live by. So those are the new values. What's ahead? Tony, Andrew, Leslie are going to be building a path moving into the next year to roll these out across the organization, as well as how do they build them into different people touchpoints such as recognition and performance management? There's a lot of ways to bring these alive and make these a new words. I would imagine you're going to start hearing people say these words when people did this, calling that out. And I would encourage all of you to do that as you move forward and sort of bring them into your vocabulary. Thanks for having me here, everybody. Pretty exciting stuff if you ask me. I'll be proud, and I know you are of the city, but this is what they're about.
Wonderful.
I just want to ask him, how do you measure values when you're talking about the culture of the organization?
Yeah. How do you measure them? Well, usually, you know, a lot, one way to measure value use is that organizations oftentimes have some sort of surveys where they get feedback from the team members. And a question to ask in that survey moving forward, do you see our values alive in the organization? And you measure how that goes up. Once these come alive and you start using them, you will see people say, people are living by these, they're rising to the occasion, they're using them that way. So that's one way to measure them. Another way is in the language. As I said, the more you use the language, the more everybody's going to start using the language. And that's how you sort of make it apart. It becomes sort of a way you talk as far as who you are. And what it makes it happen is that people say, I want to work here, I want to be a part of that. And as you attract new talent to the city, people say, that aligns with what I believe. I want to be a part of that. So it's a great way, stronger than those words, those are all great words behind you on that wall, but this is what's going to get and keep people here at the city.
Are we going to put that information on the new boards back there or?
You better. It's going to. If I have any say into that, no, I'm sure that will happen.
Yeah, we're going to get that updated. Sorry, yes, as soon as we can.
Got it. Thank you.
So question, Tony, Leslie, you helped facilitate this. Do you have commentary on how the process went and what you took away from it?
I think the thing that was most impressive to me was the actual listening sessions. I mean, we got to sort of introduce the team and then we stepped back and watched the magic happen. We also got to participate as the leadership team in the same exercise that the rest of our representative staff did. And it was really impressive just to hear all the positivity coming out of everybody and all the things that mean a lot to them individually and how it expresses who we are as an organization. So that to me was the exciting part, you know, going through it and kind of nailing down what those things were, was actually harder than I thought because there was so many things that we had to make sure that we were representing.
It was also very interesting to see how the themes arose across all of the sessions and how much we really had in common across our various departments.
Great. Steve?
I was going to chime in and say, my, one that stuck out for me was see the good. And I say that because all five of them individually are very important and even collectively in their own way, they're, I mean, they're, it's important. But if we fail to take care of our employees health-wise, proper work life and personal life, home life, we don't balance that out, then you know, people show up to work not wanting to work or they go home from work carrying work with them. And Chief Stecker knows exactly what I'm talking about. Cops take their work home sometime and it's a very stressful environment sometimes and the balance that, I'm sorry, Chief Crossick, firemen do also. But I never lived that life. I lived the self. So if you don't balance that appropriately, then, then people start to fail and then it becomes a... What's the word I'm looking for? It just keeps rolling down the road and everything gets, everything falls apart. Snowballing. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. That's it. So thank you very much.
That's not an aspiration. The team felt that the city as a group really looked and cared about them and looked and had to support them. So again, that's not aspirational. People talked about, they felt that was happening already.
I'm very glad this happened. I say this all the time, but Oak Creek's greatest assets is its employees. That is the heart and soul of Oak Creek of getting things done. They create the quality of life we have here along with council members. Thank you for everybody who took part. Look forward to implementing.
For having us.
Okay, moving on. Item seven is a presentation. It is an exciting one, our 2024 executive draft operating capital improvement projects budget. And Max is here to explain that all to us and put it in layman's terms so we can get it all.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Common Council, Max Gagan, Assistant City Administrator and Controller. So before you tonight is the presentation of the 2024 executive draft budget. I will say that I would be remiss if I didn't thank our department directors, our department managers, division managers for a lot of their hard work in crafting this document. You know, it's really me that's doing the compilation of it, but it's really them who has to then go implement the programs and services that you see funded in here. So a lot of hard work went into that. The other thing I'll say, and you might see this as we go through our presentation, this is the 16th budget I've done in my career and this was the one with the most moving parts by any means. You know, a lot of changes, whether that be additional shared revenue dollars as well as looking at a public safety staffing plan. So a lot of moving parts. You know, I just appreciate, you know, people who've had patience with me for the last month and diligently working in my office. So happy to get on to other things that aren't the budget. So it's really in your hands now. So what we'll talk about tonight are the property tax levy and the major funds, just an overview of revenues and expenses, talk about human resource enhancements included in the budget proposal, a brief presentation on the 2024 capital improvement plan, and then common council decision points, really looking for feedback at Friday's budget workshop. So today's really the opportunity to listen. If you have questions or need, want a further explanation, certainly chime in during here, but kind of we're going to save the discussion really for Friday. I want to give, you know, the common council members the time to really digest the information and then come prepared on Friday to ask great questions. So looking at the property tax levy by fund, you'll see that overall, looking at a 9.6% increase in the levy. And what I'll say is that typically, we're allowed to increase our levy based off net new construction and operating expenses. Our net new construction percentage is about 1.6%. What strategy is employed in the 2024 budget is taking what is called an exception to the levy limit specifically for debt service. And what that does is it allows us to fund the public safety staffing plan. Essentially, we're going to hopefully levy dollars to help pay the debt service and then shift some general revenue that was paying the debt service into the general fund and the EMS fund to help support those new personnel. So you'll see we have a slight decrease for things in the solidways fund, but you can see a substantial increase in the debt service fund. So the amount of that exception would be about $1.9 million. Again, we'll talk about that shortly. Next, just looking at the property tax levy by fund, so you can see how it's dispersed amongst our major funds. What you'll note is really the big changes year to year, the general fund was about 69% of the levy last, in the last budget, so the 2023 budget, and debt service is about 2%. So seeing debt service move up to 8% with that levy exception, general fund coming down 64%. What I'll say is that generally, any portion of your levy for debt service, you really want to limit that to about 15%. The credit agencies do look at that. If you're levying too much for your debt service, you're essentially tying up a lot of today's tax dollars for past projects. So you know, anything really under 15% is a good position to be in and actually anything under 10 is excellent. So we're in a great position in Oak Creek, even if we proceed down the path of an exception for levy, of the levy limit for debt service, still being at 8% of all tax dollars going to debt service is a great position to be in. Next, just want to provide a high-level overview of the changes in our general fund revenues. And kind of the way this chart reads is you'll see the different categories of revenues. You'll see what we had budgeted in 2023. You'll see what we're budgeting for 2024 and then you'll see a difference. I won't go through each of them individually, but I'll really hit the highlights of the big ones. You'll see on the property tax levy about 1.6% for the general fund. Again, a lot of that is the portion that is for net new construction. Again, I imagine that was 1.6%. Seeing decreases in things like the utility pilot payment is our equalized valued increases in our equalized tax rate drops. You'll see the additional shared revenue, the general payment going up 890,000-ish. That's the amount that was allocated to Oak Creek in Wisconsin Act 12 that was passed earlier this year, seeing about a $2 million increase in the utility aid payment. Again, this is another payment from the state of Wisconsin. And really, this is the means that would fund the public safety staffing plan. So we're taking these revenues that we're servicing our debt, moving them over to the general fund and then using levy dollars through the exception to pay off the debt service. You'll see our general transportation aids decreasing 10%. I think, it sounds like a broken record, I've been saying it for the last two years, they've decreased 10%. They're going to decrease another 10% next year and then stabilize in 2026. It's all based off a six-year average spending formula on transportation activities. Again, we had a lot of high transportation activities when we were building roads with Draxel Town Square. See our expenditure restraint incentive program decrease about $140,000. Again, that was what we expected. I think we were planning on about 135, but what we were expecting due to a decrease in our equalized tax rate. You do see some minor adjustments for development-related fees and interest earnings. And this is all based off actual activities. So development fees increase about 60,000. You know, certainly, what we've seen in our five-year averages could say, this could have gone up more, but again, trying to balance an operating budget on volatile revenues is not ideal. So really trying to minimize our development-related fee budget adjustments or our interest earning budget adjustments, again, increasing about $85,000 here. If you look at our activity, we've had about 1.5 million in interest earnings across all funds through six months. So again, trying to be very conservative, interest rates are high now, they may go down. Don't want to put the council and this organization in a position where if interest rates go down, we're having difficult conversations about how do we fund our programs and services? So really trying to keep the budgeted interest earnings at a low. You'll see transfers in increasing pretty significantly, about almost $800,000. And again, as I mentioned earlier, very unique budget, a lot of moving parts. And, uh, when, one of these moving parts being that when the state legislature adopted Act twelve, providing this additional shared revenue to municipalities, one of the provisions was they exempted all communities from the expenditure restraint limit from each year. So the expenditure restraint limit, and that's what this hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment is, says, you know, a municipality can only increase its budget by sixty percent of its net new construction plus inflation. Given that they gave historic increases in shared revenue, they did a one-year exemption from the limit, uh, and essentially resetting the base, starting with your twenty-four budget and the twenty-five. So this really gave us the opportunity to look at our budgetary structures, and one of the things that we're recommending is we have a, a separate fund that we call our We Energies Fund. Uh, it's about two point two five million dollars in mitigation payments from We Energies, and that was for the development of the Elm Grove Generation Station, Elm Road Generation Station. And the police and fire departments used to have line item budgets throughout there. And the reason that structure probably came about is because we got a large chunk of revenue. We were held to an expenditure limit, and special revenue funds are exempt from the expenditure limit, so let's squirrel it away here. So right now, if you're looking at a city budget, the police department budget's actually two budgets. Uh, one in this We Energies Fund, about six hundred eighty-eight thousand in 2023. Uh, and then, you know, the fire department has an equivalent about six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, uh, what we're recommending is we're still gonna have that fund. We'll still receive the payment through there, but then transfer it into the general fund. Uh, and this, what you'll do is, what you'll see is, you know, a police department budget, it's one budget. So that bottom line dollar, uh, is what it costs to police this community. On the fire department side, you'll see three budgets go to two. So you'll see, we'll still have a fire department budget and then an EMS budget. So, uh, really trying to be a little bit more transparent in how those operations run, uh, as well as, you know, how do we better communicate that to the public? So, uh, something that we took advantage of, you know, certainly, uh, quite a bit of work to make that, that happen, but, you know, it's the right thing to do. And then lastly, you see all other items increase about forty-two thousand. This is just a pie chart showing the breakdown of our revenue by category. Uh, the one thing that has really changed in the past year is property taxes were about sixty-five percent. Shared revenue was about fifteen to twenty percent. Uh, given those significant adjustments in shared revenue, seeing that being a larger part of the pie, seeing property taxes being a little bit less. But what I'll say is that, you know, you're still having about eighty percent of your revenue that is either controlled by a levy limit, unless you take an exception, or the state. So two largest funding sources for your largest budget, for the most part, are outside of much of the control of the common council and their decision authority. But you will see we do have other fees, uh, other taxes, things like room taxes, commercial revenues. So even when we do make fee adjustments, it, it really isn't something that's gonna make or break or balance your budget. It's really, you know, how much was your net new construction and how much does the state provide in shared revenue? Looking at the general funds expenditures by category, you'll see, uh, some pretty significant increases across the board. Usually we'd see like, you know, two, three, four percents, uh, you know, especially on the personnel side, mostly matching cost of living adjustments. You know, given some of those structural budgetary changes I just discussed, you know, we added, you know, eight, nine hundred thousand from the We Energies Fund in here. You know, plus, uh, almost two million dollar public safety staffing plan. You know, you're seeing about a three million dollar increase in direct personal costs, indirect personal costs fourteen percent, so on and so forth. Supplies and utilities, uh, the majority of that is for police and fire equipment. Uh, both, you know, having to add new vehicles if you're having new personnel on the street, uh, equipping those vehicles. You know, all the startup costs, gear, guns, and then for the fire department turnout gear for new employees as well. So that makes up the large chunk of that thirty-four percent increase. And then the other things, other services, maintenance vehicles, some pretty small increases there. Overall, about a twelve, thirteen percent increase. So looking at kinda how are, how's our general fund expenditures, uh, break out on a percentage basis? You know, you've heard me say this, you know, governments are human capital intensive organizations, you know. It takes people to provide the programs and services we do. And, you know, it isn't just me saying that. It's not listening to Sean say that. It comes out in the numbers. We spend seventy-six percent of every dollar out the door on our employees, seventy-seven if you count the training and the indirect costs. So when we talk about the programs and services and the dollars associated with it, it, there's a person that's tied to it. And there's very little, from a programmatic perspective, we can do without the people we have. So certainly a value you'll see on this budget is really treating our employees as best as we can with the funding available. And then lastly, you'll see our general fund expenditures by function. Uh, so you'll see again, public safety, a pretty significant increase, uh, primarily due to that staffing plan, which we'll go into some more details, uh, shortly. You'll see public safety makes up about forty-six percent. Uh, this is not uncommon. Look at any municipal budget, public safety is generally half of it, half of every top taxpayer dollar goes towards public safety. But you'll see general government and development, twenty-six percent, public works twenty-one percent. You see library, rec, health and human services. So, uh, this spread's pretty typical of what you see in municipalities across. Now I'll just transition to some of our major funds, so you'll see our solid waste fund. Uh, really hitting some highlights here, really holding the levy basically flat, trying to budget some interest earnings, uh, to try and keep that levy support flat. Uh, really the only cost increase you see that other items, uh, you know, the cost of recycling, non-contractual items, things like electronics, tires, things that GFL doesn't pick up. Those costs have really gone up, so, you know, our DPW director recommended some additional funding to help support that. That's not the whole thirty-one thousand, but that does make a large chunk of it, and a very healthy fund balance about three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, next, looking at our emergency, uh, medical service fund or EMS fund. Uh, you'll see, you know, some jumps in the property tax levy, again, supporting, uh, additional personnel, some additional realized revenues, whether that's fire insurance dues, ambulance revenues. No, these aren't fee adjustments. This is, we're actually seeing increased activity here. Uh, we do have budgeted interest earnings here, uh, as well as a transfer in. Again, that's a portion of that We Energies money that's gonna help support EMS service, and then some all other items. And then you'll see on the expenditures, the direct employee costs being the most significant with the public safety staffing plan. Uh, we did true up our ambulance billing costs. They've been budgeted a hundred thousand for years. We, our costs are actually like one sixty to one eighty. So that's the portion that our billing provider takes to administer the program. And then increases in the all other items, and a lot of that is kind of some of the consolidations of those other budgets. Uh, you'll can see, uh, fund balance, one point seven million dollars. Um, and what I can tell you, if you look at that 2023 budget, we made the decision to use three hundred eighty thousand to fund the purchase of a new ambulance. And, you know, what we're seeing through seven months of the year, eight months of the year, is that we're actually gonna have a surplus. We're gonna not spend that three hundred eighty thousand and actually put another seventy-five thousand back in there. So again, that's where we're seeing activity like interest earnings or ambulance revenues really gone up in the past few years. And, you know, that's a great position to be in. So, uh, very healthy budget here. Our consolidated dispatch fund, uh, you'll see major changes being, uh, some of the levy support. A small adjustment for our contract with Saint Francis, uh, that expires at the end of 2024, working on the new ten-year agreement with them. Uh, some changes in some of the reimbursements that they would have. Saint Francis be paying a portion of, uh, a next generation nine-one-one system, uh, we're looking to implement, uh, this year. So you'll see that itemizes cost. Uh, budget does include the addition of a supervisor position, uh, for first shift specifically. So we have supervisors on second and third shift, adding one to first shift. Right now, we have a overall like manager, director who oversees it, and, you know, I'll go in there and have meetings, and he'll be in there dispatching, um, because if people are calling out or people are sick and, you know, we really need our, our dispatch manager to focus on managing the center, not doing the actual dispatch. So having that frontline supervisor on first shift is really gonna help, uh, Jason take a step back, really think about how do we operate this in the most efficient, effective manner, and really get another person there. We've started accepting our own nine-one-one calls earlier this year, so as you can imagine, our call volume has gone up pretty significantly too. So just looking at the human resource enhancements in the budget, you'll see that a three percent wage adjustment is provided for all police and union or fire union employees, and that's per their collective bargaining agreements. Uh, those do go through the end of 2024. You can see, uh, those do provide for a one and a half percent adjustments, both in Jan- January and then July. Uh, you'll see a three percent wage adjustment effective at the beginning of the year for all other part-time full-time city employees. Uh, the budget does include some market adjustments across multiple departments, as well as salary adjustments to accommodate increased responsibilities with building capacity and resilience in our organization plan. Uh, one example I'll give for a market rate adjustment is, you know, we've done a recruitment, library pages, historically filled with high school kids or other means. I think, uh, we're seeing challenges just with recruitment. Uh, when we advertised for that earlier this year, like, the starting salary was nine dollars, or nine dollars and fifty cents. And, you know, one of the things we looked at is, you know, how do we make that more attractive to fill those positions? Cause that constant turnover in those part-time positions, that's what's providing coverage at the library. So, you know, we do include some market adjustments for some of those part-time library staff. And again, that's just one example. There's more that, that can be shared at a later date. Uh, we do include wages for a part-time building inspector, uh, to conduct state plan reviews and inspections. Uh, so this is something that Personal and Finance Committee looked at earlier this year. Uh, our former building inspector, uh, who used to do this, left the organization. Uh, and we really wanted to be able to provide the best service possible, uh, which is us doing the state plan reviews and inspections, uh, as well as to provide more capacity for, uh, the inspection staff. So we have a part-time building inspector started in February this year. Uh, he's done a wonderful job. It's really brought some very progressive ideas to how to run the operation too. So we thank him for his ability to do state plan reviews and inspections, but he's been a greater asset even above and beyond that. Uh, we have some increased wages and hours for the police department's community resource coordinator position. Uh, seeing a lot more, uh, requests, uh, for some community-oriented policing programs and services. So, you know, there's many things that the police department does for our businesses, residents and visitors, and that kind of outward-facing position. Uh, and then lastly, uh, what we'll transition to next is looking at, uh, the addition of six police officers, one detective, one dispatch supervisor, and funding of the police aid program. And then the addition of four firefighter paramedics, one part-time fire inspector, and funding the cadet intern program. And again, these are all the items that would be funded through utilizing a levy limit exception for debt service and kind of shifting some of that revenue around. I guess before we'll get into that, we'll talk a little bit about the 2024 capital improvement program. Uh, so here's just a breakdown of the improvement program by funding source. Uh, I, I filtered it by highest to lowest, and you know, what I'm proud, I'm proud to say is thirty-five percent of all dollars being spent in this capital budget are other people's dollars. So federal, state and local grants, three point four million dollars. Uh, a lot of that is leveraging, uh, state programs, two of it to replace bridges, leveraging about eighty-five percent, uh, of state and federal dollars to do a large LED streetlight replacement program. We only have to put seventy thousand in. They're giving us four hundred thousand. So, uh, again, leveraging other people's dollars to end this community, uh, certainly it's something we like to see. Uh, next largest one being Ted thirteen. Again, this is kind of a continuation of our bluff stabilization and revatment project. Uh, and then you'll see our typical funding sources, our utility aid payments, about a million dollars, We Energies. And then some uses of our, our sinking funds, our equipment replacement, building reserve, bridge replacement, so on and so forth. So really just hit on the, the major projects that we see. Uh, you'll notice this is a little bit scaled back from last year. Last year was a twenty million dollar program. Year before that was about six million, or at about nine. So somewhere in between. But, you know, major priorities and where you see the cost centers are, are the lakefront bluff stabilization revatment. So an additional two point two million dollars, uh, just as constructions ensued on that ran into some challenges, some changes in scope. So I'm trying to get that project finalized. Uh, and then you'll see the two larger bridge projects, both on South Sixth Street. Uh, the first one's, uh, design in twenty-four, build in twenty-five, and that's about a one point five million dollar bridge. Uh, eighty percent of it funded by state government. Uh, same with the other bridge, about one point two million dollar, one point one, one point million dollar bridge. That's to be constructed in twenty-four, again, eighty percent funded by state government. You'll see a million dollars for our annual road program, which is what it's historically been funded at. Uh, you'll see redoing a portion of the police station parking lot, about five hundred fifty thousand. Those are dollars from MMSD for infiltration prevention. Uh, you'll see the streetlight project, and then you'll see some of the DPW stuff, so replacing front loaders, so, so on and so forth. Um, you know, we have some upgrades, uh, for the police station. You know, that's a twenty-year-old facility as of this August. Facility hits twenty years old. It's got a lot of things that need to start, uh, being taken care of. You know, we prioritized the chiller this year, but we also did include funding in the budget to really do the facility analysis and really lay out, what's the useful life left on, you know, roofs, mechanicals, all of it. Let's, you know, prioritize and get a funding strategy for that, really bring that forward, uh, to the council next year. Uh, you'll see Chapel Hills Park rehabilitation, tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts. Uh, and then core IT network replacement, so the thing that runs everything needs to be replaced. Uh, it was last replaced when we moved into this building, so about that ten-year lifecycle. Trying to get advance, uh, ahead of that. Uh, it's the smallest dollar amount on my list. It's probably the most important. It's really hard to do anything if you have no servers, network, dispatch, so on and so forth. So, look, going to the common council decision points. So, uh, again, I'll just highlight them very quickly, and then we'll go into it in depth more on some of them. Again, I've mentioned it a couple times in the presentation, but this budget does include an exception to our levy limit, uh, for debt service, and that's the strategy to fund the public safety staffing plan that's gonna be presented to you. Uh, the creation of a marketing and public relations budget, uh, that was contemplated in the organizational plan, and how that relates to city and tourism, just kind of provide an update, uh, have some decisions, uh, to be made in the future. Again, structural change, that elimination of the We Energy Fund and the line item budgets for police and fire. Uh, again, a decision for you to make, but something that we've put in the proposed budget and kind of allocated those into the general fund or the EMS fund. Uh, use of cash on hand for CIP requests, CIP funding for the fire department self-contained breathing apparatus, establishing sustainable funding for sidewalk and trail maintenance, and lastly, talk about storm order fees. So looking at the public safety staffing plan, on the police department side, uh, they brought forth to administration and then to the Personal and Finance Committee, a plan, uh, that would result in the addition of six police officers, one detective, and the funding for the police aid program. And, um, one of the things that I think is a little unique about the presentation of this plan to may have what you've seen in previous budgets or prior iterations, or at least from a committee perspective, is that, you know, really wanted to take a look at, how can we make the biggest effect, you know, immediately as well as, uh, very tangible? So if you add just police officers, you're gonna have more staff. But if you don't adjust your minimum staffing, there's not a guarantee that you have those officers on the street. So, uh, what this budget proposes, based off of, uh, Chief Stacker's proposal, is increasing the minimum staffing by one on all three shifts, twenty-four, seven. So for example, on first shift, staffing would increase twenty-five percent in total, but we're guaranteed a seventeen percent increase in minimum staffing, so an extra person on the road twenty-four, seven. Uh, so you'll see what those percentage increase in total staffing and then the minimum staffing is. Uh, you'll see a twenty percent increase in the bureau staffing, fifty percent in the men staffing. Uh, you know, that will really allow the police officers to shift some of the casework that if the detectives are too busy, they can really shift it to the detective bureau. And then, you know, one of the things, uh, lastly, that's important is, yes, you know, we can create new positions, but how do you fill them? You know, that's a challenge. We can create new positions, but how do you fill them? You know, that's a challenge that police and fire agencies have been having for the past few years. And you know, what we're seeing as the best practices, you know, start, you know, trying to get people introduced into the field earlier. Uh, whether it's police aid program, cadet programs, internship programs. So really trying to bolster our police aid program. Uh, so we can get future recruits uh, for Oak Creek Police Department. On the fire side, uh, you'll see the addition of four firefighter paramedics, one part-time fire inspector and funding for the cadet intern program. Uh, increases our total shift staffing thirteen percent. Uh, so you'll see on a twenty-four hour. Hour, not house, uh, shift to go from fifteen to seventeen. Um, you'll see a provides dedicated support to the mobile integrated health program. So. That's part of the fire department strategic plan, really. Uh, you know, having someone that's dedicated to, you know, really analyze call volume, figuring out. You know, are there ways we can reduce our call volume strategically, you know, working with some of our partners, whether it's assisted living homes and, you know, better care practices, but. Uh, you know, fun fact and a, not a fun fact, but uh, committee did hear this a couple of weeks ago. Fire department call volume has gone up fifty percent since twenty eighteen. So think about that, five years. Went from about forty-five hundred calls to six thousand. So. How can we address that? And you can't just throw staff at a problem. I can't increase the budget fifty percent to do that. So that's where. The mobile integrated health program is critical to really analyzing calls. How do you slow that down and still provide the best care to our community? And then looking at adding part-time fire inspectors, and again, this is really going to help us alleviate strain of utilizing line personnel to do inspections. We have requirements, we have to do inspections uh, per state statute, do about twenty-five hundred a year. You know, if we have challenges in that fire prevention role, we're going to have to bring a unit out of service and and really help that. Again, that's a mandate we have. So. You know, by adding to the fire prevention bureau, you're actually adding capacity to the fire department. We can keep more units in service, more people on the line. And then lastly. Uh, trying to develop a robust cadet and intern program, really build that pipeline of future firefighter and paramedic recruits. Uh, we had that started last year. They were unpaid interns. Uh, pleased to say one of them did join uh, our ranks, I think, earlier this year. So we've seen success with it. You know, what we're looking to do is really take that to the next level, have more interns, uh, nominal pay, help pay for their certifications, training. Paramedic school to really set them up for that next level because, you know, if you. And it works with the police aides as well. It's, you know, you can do all the testing you want, but having. That boots-on-the-ground experience with them, you know the person you're getting. So, you know, certainly I know like. For the internship example, you know, having that three to six months with that person, you knew the person you were getting, not someone just off the street who tested well, who interviewed well. Passed their behavioral and psychs and their physical. You knew that person. So certainly these are going to be critical to help building. Police and fire departments in the future. So I'm sure you say, how much does this cost and how can I fund this? Uh, so costs about one point nine million dollars. Um, how will it be funded? Again, uh, said this a few times, but. We can take an exception to our levy limit. Again, we're usually allowed only net new construction. Uh, but there is an exception for debt service and that exception exists because as municipalities, we issue general obligation debt. General obligation debt is required to be backed by the full faith and credit of the taxpayer. So uh, we can't. Have a limit on our debt service because we would be violating essentially our bond covenants or our, our, our bonds. It it just legally, we can't. Uh, and if there was, uh, one, I don't know how some communities in the state would operate, but two. Uh, no one would ever sell us debt. Because if there's no guarantee that the taxpayers can levy for it, then. Uh, you know, that puts those investors in a precarious position and that they may not get their return. So. Uh, that's why that exception exists. Uh, so again, we would levy for our debt service payment, about one point nine million of it. Uh, currently our general debt service payment is about two point five million. So not all of it. And then taking that general revenue, the utility aid payment and really shifting it to the operating budget. Um, and what you'll see is, you know, one of the things, uh, I would just hear just talking to other colleagues in the field is, you know. Levy limit exception for debt service, every community uses it or most communities use it. And, you know. Me being me is the intellectual curiosity I have. I wanted to validate that, so I pulled all the data from the state of Wisconsin. And it just kind of validated what I hear. Uh, you'll see that ninety-four percent of all cities in the state do take this exception. Uh, so there are eleven who don't. Oak Creek's the largest of them. The next largest, I think, was Muskego. And then the next largest was a town, city of like five thousand people. So if you really look at the list, it's really small communities who may not even. Have their own police force, fire department, so on and so forth. Uh, you'll see twenty-five of twenty-seven cities and villages over thirty thousand. Population, so ninety-three percent. Uh, and again, the only city is us and then the village being city or village of Monomahal Falls. And then lastly, seventeen of nineteen municipalities in the county, so about ninety percent. The only one who doesn't is West Milwaukee, again. Five, six, seven thousand people, very small operation in the square mile. And the average amount of those exceptions can vary. You know, some people use two, three million dollars, you know, South Milwaukee takes a five million dollar exception. So. Again, uh, it's really just the means to, how do you fund? The capital improvement program, but really in our instance, because we haven't taken the exception, we've been using general revenues for that service. Really gives us some flexibility to be able to shift some budgets around to make this staffing plan a reality. And then lastly, on the staffing plan, really want to talk through its tax implications. What you'll see is. Uh, history of the city of Oak Creek levy, and I got to caveat this, this is just the city only levy. This doesn't include any of the TID districts. Uh, so this is just what a property owner in Oak Creek would pay for city services. Uh, you'll see, you know, our levy back in twenty eighteen at the top. About twenty, twenty point seven million dollars. Uh, you can see the levy increases over time. You can see the percentage increase. And again, this top. Part of the table is really illustrating, these were our levy increases just because of net new construction. We have not taken this exception before. So. You can see, you know, we were having levy adjustments, you know, two point two, four, five point seven, so on and so forth. And because of the development of the community, it really afforded us the ability to have some pretty. Uh. Sizable levy increases in some of the past years. Uh, but you'll see again, our net new construction was one point six percent uh, for this year. So. If we didn't move forward with a public safety plan and kind of that funding strategy, this is what the levy would be, twenty-four point three million. Uh, increase about three hundred eighty thousand, one point six percent increase. Uh, you'll see, this is what the tax impact would be for a median valued home in the community. Median valued home, uh, just a hair under three hundred twenty-five thousand, so three hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred. So annually paying about fourteen hundred forty dollars for city programs and services or a hundred twenty dollars a month. Uh. When I look at that number, especially on the per month. Number, I think that's a great value. Hundred twenty dollars a month relative to the other monthly bills you may have. I think that's a great value for the programs and services that Oak Creek offers as property owners. What you'll see in this bottom table is if we were to move forward with the public safety staffing plan, taking a levy exception. You'll see again, the levy is now increasing nine point six percent. Uh, so it's about two point three million dollars. Uh, the total levy would be about twenty-six point two million dollars. And then you'll see that annual tax impact for that median valued home. Uh, annual impact about fifteen hundred and fifty-four dollars and about a hundred and thirty dollars a month, just under. So. Uh, if you're doing some of the quick math there, uh, annual impact for that median valued home is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per year. Or about nine dollars and fifty cents per month. So, um, you know, I think really. Decision point for the common council, let's get back Friday, is, you know, is the value of the plan that's provided ahead of you on the. Police and fire department, is it worth, you know, an average temp, tax impact of nine dollars and fifty cents a month for a median value home? Uh, next, uh, just talk briefly about marketing and public relations and uh, the structure in the budget. So. Uh, the budget that is proposed doesn't create a new department, but we did reserve some capacity in our contingency account to fund a portion of the marketing and public relations director position. Um, all I can say at this time is really this conversation relates to a lot of SAP goals as well as strategies with. City and the tourism commission and, you know, sharing of costs. And I know, uh, city administrator Vickers has a lot more uh, details on this. So. Really something I think we'll dive more into on Friday, but uh, just. Know that, you know, we've started that process of how do we uh, get that part of the. Uh, new organization structure up and running, you know, really starting to reserve some capacity so we can start funding these in meaningful ways. Again, a structural change, uh, that I alluded to earlier, that elimination of our we energies funds. Again, police and fire had their own line item budgets in this. Separate special revenue fund, and that was in addition to their existing budgets. Uh, again, this budget restructuring really only possible due to that suspension of the expenditure restraint incentive payment limit for twenty twenty-four. Uh, so it really gave me the opportunity to evaluate our budget and say, how can we streamline this and make this better? I can tell you that, uh, when I proposed this to both police and fire, I got some cheers in the room because it does reduce their administrative burden quite a bit. You know, think about paying every invoice and you're charging three budgets instead of two. Yeah, there's some of it's automated, some of it isn't. So. You know, for the police department, they got one budget to charge and now they don't have to figure out, does it go to this budget or that budget? Uh, it really streamlines our payroll uh, function.
Is it, will this be, this will not revert next year, right?
Correct. So, uh, you know, we're given the ability to uh, present a twenty twenty-four budget if there was a limit and any amount over. And then that's going to be the new baseline moving forward. So, you know, if the state says our limit is five percent for our twenty-five budget, it would be five percent above the twenty-four. So essentially what we're doing is we're really taking the opportunity in twenty-four, let's put our budget structure how we would like to see it moving forward. And then that puts us in a position to then comply with the limits once they start back up for the twenty-five.
I mean, it's a fantastic uh, fix to the budget. It has been an ongoing source of murkiness for.
Yeah, I I mean, it's been, it's really hard to communicate that, you know, the we energies funds plays for three police officers plus some supplies and support. Plus, you know, this training or that training or three firefighter paramedics, so on and so forth. Um, and you know, again. Streamlining a business practice, reducing administrative burden, and it it's a better way to communicate what our costs are. Now there's one budget. I got a bottom line of. Twelve, you know, twelve, twelve and a half million dollars in the police department. I know that's how much we spend. And it's not like these personnel are specifically dedicated for that function. So, uh, it does give us flexibility. So. You know, certainly even auditing, you know, just having one less fund you have to reconcile. So, uh, something that. There's a little bit of effort to get there, but I think it's worth it uh, in the end. Next, uh, use of cash on hand for CIP requests. Uh, common councils aware. Uh, we've established sinking funds in our capital improvement fund, uh, pay for things like equipment replacement, building reserve, bridges, so on and so forth. So. Uh, what you'll see is that the twenty twenty-four capital improvement program recommending about the use of one point two, seven million dollars in cash on hand. Uh, from those sinking funds, uh, you'll see on the equipment replacement fund about five hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. You can see the projects that. Recommending to be funded with cash on hand. Uh, you'll see use of three hundred sixty thousand dollars from the building reserve fund. Um, you can see those projects, and then you'll see our bridge replacement fund, uh, use of three hundred sixty thousand. That's the local match for the Sixth Street Bridge, the. Seventy-six hundred one. I don't know if that's the north or south one, but uh, you know, I think that's a great news story. We've had. A bridge replacement fund. We started it, I think, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We've put seventy-five thousand dollars in it every year. Uh, and then when that opportunity comes to get a state grant to pay for eighty percent of it. We have a funding source where we can match that and not use our million dollars of we energies funding or utility aid payment. It it really is. Uh, allowing us to complete some pretty significant public infrastructure projects by having things like these sinking funds. So. Um, you know, if we were just asked to come up with three hundred sixty thousand outside of some of these established sinking funds, it'd be really challenging. And we would have to defer other things that were in our proposed capital improvement program. Um, you know, looking at the use of these funds, we do feel confident that we replenish them. Uh, so. Well, at year end, when we look at our budget and the general fund, and if it has a surplus, uh, first thing we do look at per our policy is replenishing these stock, these sinking funds. Try and keep them at a million dollars to start each year. Uh, so given, you know, where we've seen with interest rates and some of our other activities, I feel confident we can replenish these. You know, right now that general fund surplus is looking to be about one point eight, one point nine million dollars. So I think we'll be in a good position to replenish this plus more. Uh, CIP funding for the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. So. The fire department's SCBA's are coming end of lice, and again, that's the tank and and masks, uh, for those who don't know. Um, you know, the city has applied for a grant through FEMA for the five hundred thousand dollars. We haven't received award yet. Uh, that application was earlier this year. Uh, and if we're unsuccessful in this round, we're going to go at it one more time next year, uh, see if this is something that will be funded. And then if not. Uh, if we're ultimately unsuccessful, then we have to make the decision, how do we fund this? Um, and again, these aren't, these aren't wants, these are needs. Uh. Chief can tell you, you know, they're coming out of standards soon. So, you know, it's really something we got to jump on in the next year, maybe year and a half. Um, you know, really options would be, do we use some cash on hand? You know, if our reserves are higher than our policy, do you say, here's a one-time use of cash? To fund it, you know. Again, our EMS fund, great performance this year, you know, fund balance of one point seven million dollars. Maybe that's an idea. Uh, we can look at, or we can go the route of maybe doing a debt issuance and, you know, we will do the financial analysis, but. You know, if you can get debt issued at four percent and you're earning five percent interest earnings, it makes sense to issue debt. Um, we're in a very unique position right now where uh, the yields on debt are actually lower than the yields you see on your short-term interest, right? So. Um, you know, it may make sense to actually issue debt, uh, and then earn higher money on the cash. So. Again, things we'll have to evaluate, you know, we'll keep the council apprised to, you know, if we're awarded this grant or the next one, but. Uh, it's something we just know we need to do. But again, when we're talking about a million dollars in that we energies money and some of the sinking funds, to say half of that is for. This, it just, it would throw five or ten other projects to the next year. So. Uh, again, uh, I think we can come up with a good funding strategy. Uh, it's really just kind of a wait and see for the next few months. Uh, establishing a sustainable funding source for sidewalk and trail maintenance. So, uh, the five-year strategic action plan does include the goal. See it on the screen, really kind of identify the policy and funding plan for connecting gaps otherwise. And we're going to create a sidewalk and trail maintenance fund, really a sinking fund. So maybe some years it's twenty thousand, some years we might accumulate it up. Uh, get, and we can do a more substantial project. Uh, really looking for in this capital improvement program, seed it with sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the intention of that being reoccurring. And again, you know, uh, you know, engineering will work with DPW and really figure out where are the gaps. You know, do we look at leveraging some of this money with the road program? Because if you're doing the road, um, you might as well do the sidewalk and there's economies of scale of having one contractor out there. So. Uh, really want to be able to start creating the sinking fund to hope, hopefully meet uh, the common council's intention with this strategic action plan initiative. And then lastly, stormwater fees. So, uh, proposed budget does not include an increase to stormwater fees, but I just want to make. The council aware that earlier this year, we did have a debt issuance for that Drexel Avenue stormwater. Uh, lift station rehabilitation project. Uh, so we borrowed one point two five million dollars. Uh, so you see the first debt service payment is just over two hundred thousand. Uh, and the only reason I bring this up is we're, the fund's in a great position now, high interest earnings. Uh, we've seen some reduced costs with some vacancies. So it's one of those for the next year or two. Uh, we could not adjust the fund and I think we'll be in a great position. Long term, there's a structural deficit. So it's something in two or three years. Will likely need to address, um. Uh, an adjustment to that fee, you know, our thought being that if, you know. The council is really willing to. Have us move forward with the public safety staffing plan, certainly there's taps, tax implications, communication strategies. And adjusting one other fee, let's just simplify it. communication strategies, and adjusting one other fee, let's just simplify it, let's focus on this for this year. Figure out if we need to adjust anything in the future. So you'll see, this is the long-term funding strategy, a lot of numbers, you know, really all I see is, you know, showing a little reduction in the fund balance for 2024, but again, we have about a million dollars in there. But you'll see in those latter years, you're starting to see some pretty significant losses over a hundred thousand. So it's again, one of those things, short-term, we can make manage with the current fee we have, long-term, really need to look at that fee to accommodate that debt service. But again, that's something we knew when we issued that debt earlier. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for me, and then kind of discuss this more on Friday.
Great. Thank you, Max. Questions for Max, comments, or we'll dig in deeper Friday for sure.
Friday will work.
You know, Max, I'm going to have some questions. Always, right? You know, usually Maxwell and we're getting ready for operating budget reviews. I'm like looking about as forward to them as I am getting a root canal. But you did a fantastic job of laying this out in a very understandable and comprehensive way.
Thank you.
Hands, hands, hands to you.
I appreciate that. I take a lot of pride in this, so.
You can tell.
It's my favorite time of year. You are, you are a CFO. We wrapped up, wrapped up all of our audits last week, and I was doing fist pumps, budget, you know, it's a lot of work, you know, I'd say the last three or four weeks, it's just been long nights and weekends to really get this done, but love always that opportunity to pass it off to you.
It shows. Can you, what did you use for inflation rates for your 23, 24 as your core?
Core inflation rate? So what I think is unique is that we generally don't see inflationary cost level across all of our cost centers or items. So, you know, one of the challenges we had with this budget, when we talked to departments, it was, you would see things like, you know, We Energies increased electricity rates eleven percent, okay? You know, the cost for onboarding a new police or fire recruit went up fifty percent or something. So, you know, we don't generally use like a flat this percent by line item. It's really scrutinizing past historical data operations and then looking at projections in the future, you know, certain things like IT software. We, I think we went to three percent, felt okay. Sometimes it's five percent, but it generally isn't, you know, this is what it is. I think if, if we were just to say all operating budgets, three percent or five percent, it would actually make it really hard, because if you look at the actual line items in the budget proposal, you'll see, you know, in many of our, you know, smaller departments or divisions, you know, they're mostly staying flat.
I ask that because this is a unique year, and in the past, at least the past few years, you didn't have to worry about that.
No, I will say, I've really seen the inflationary pressure this year, though. I, you know, last year or two, didn't see much, maybe some fuel or things like that, but, you know, it just, talking to departments, it's things like, you know, minor building equip or building type projects, you know, you talk to Dick and it's like, you know, the cost to just get a contractor in here is twenty percent more than it was two years ago, so on and so forth. So, you know, we do our best as we can to accommodate those. But as you, again, as you see, there's, there's other line items that do stay.
Great. Thank you.
Others? Off till Friday.
Friday should be a pretty seamless day, really. Good discussion.
It was well laid out. Wonderful. Okay. We'll move right along then, and that will get us to item eight, and that's consideration of a resolution approving a tax increment district portable housing extension for the city of Oak Creek. Kid number six, and we're back to Max.
Yeah, I'll take that one. So thank you again. So before each night's a resolution, that would extend the life of tax increment district six, which is close, it's like kind of the other side of 13th Street from Amazon. Forget what the corporate park is over there, it's like six or seven. Yeah, so there's like six or seven parcels over there. You know, the TID has a mandatory termination date, that's October 17th this year. So we as an organization are required to either terminate it, or we have the ability to do an extension for up to a year for affordable housing purposes. So given that, you know, one of the items in our strategic action plan is really looking at housing affordability, do we create homeowner loan improvement programs revolving loan funds? I really saw this as an opportunity to take advantage of the extension provision and extend it for affordable housing. So it's about an additional three hundred and forty thousand dollars, and twenty-five percent of that would have to be spent on existing housing stock, seventy-five percent can be spent to maybe incentivize a new affordable housing project. And really, I think the key decision point here is that the city will be required to levy that three hundred forty thousand dollars approximately next year, regardless if we pass this resolution or not. Because this TID district was still open as of April 15th of 2023, we do have requirements to levy for these dollars in 2024's budget. So really, the decision point is, do we want to levy for the dollars, not extend it, levy for the dollars and return seventy percent of it to the other taxing jurisdictions? Or can we further our investment in the community through affordable housing initiatives with this three hundred and forty thousand dollars? And again, we're looking to extend it to April 14th. So essentially, this would sunset before the start of the new TID year. So we wouldn't be allowed to levy for it then in 25. So really putting it not just in a position that, you know, this could extend in perpetuity and have a tax burden on our residents, but we're just saying, let's use the tax dollars we need to levy anyways, let's keep it as a city, let's use it to help fund some of our affordable housing programs in the future. That happy answer, any questions you may have?
Questions for Max?
As a city, and this is not just to you, Max, but one of the things I found at the APA conference last week is what does affordable housing mean to us? And I know it's a loaded question.
Loaded question.
And maybe it's a discussion for Friday.
Either a discussion for Friday or, you know, a discussion, you know, in the future, because, you know, housing affordability is really in the eye of the beholder. Talk to 10 different people and you get 10 different answers. Each community and selected officials or appointed officials have different views on it as well. So yeah, that's certainly something we need to think through collectively as an organization, but what I can tell you is that, at least in this instance, in these dollars, you know, affordable housing is not defined in state statute. There is very broad guidelines as to how these dollars can be used, where they can be used. They can be used anywhere in the community. The only requirement is twenty-five percent have to be used on existing housing stock. But, you know, there are municipalities who've utilized this funding mechanism for their programs in very creative ways, certainly things we can explore in the future, but absolutely correct, you know, affordable housing term that, you know, each organization really needs to define itself to then figure out how does it move forward with its program.
What was the percentage on existing housing?
Twenty-five percent of that three hundred forty thousand, approximately.
Well, keep in mind, Friday, we can have a deeper discussion, but one thing affordable housing really gets misconstrued with is the minute it's said, everybody thinks low-income housing. Again, there's a big difference. Affordable housing is affordable housing for many different income brackets. The goal of Oak Creek is to suffice for all income brackets that live in Oak Creek. So that, that's my point of view on it, and we have to have a variety of different housing stock to accommodate that.
Certainly, and, you know, there's other perspectives about affordable housing, and should the people who work in your community be able to live in it? If we looked at the workforce of Oak Creek, maybe 10% of them actually live in Oak Creek, I would say. Is that, is one of the barriers, housing affordability? Is that something we want to strive towards? So again, a lot of future conversations to be had on this, but really this does give us some additional funding to help, you know, start those programs and really launch tackling this challenge. It's not an Oak Creek challenge, it's a nationwide challenge.
And affords us flexibility, so when the opportunity arises, we have the option. That's how I look at it. So, further questions on eight?
Sorry, I have another question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So that three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars with the twenty-five percent on existing housing, is there a timeframe on that?
There's no timeframe for the use of dollars. Again, it's a very broad provision in state statute that allows you to do the one-year extension for affordable housing. So really, the only thing in statute that regulates it is twenty-five percent has to be on existing housing stock, no geographic boundaries, no timeframes, so on and so forth, no definition of affordable housing.
So to be clear, tonight, we're voting on really an extension.
Correct. And if, you know, the council chooses not to move forward to extension, we would then have to come back at the next meeting and do a resolution to terminate the district. On the day it's to be terminated, get that signed and emailed to the OR by midnight.
This gives us flexibility.
It definitely gives you flexibility, and again, it's, it doesn't, it's not going to have a tax implication for a property owner, because we're already required to levy for it. So really, the decision is, do we, you know, remit back seventy percent of it, or do we leverage all of it for affordable housing programs?
Anything further? Okay. Motion on eight, please.
Marshall will move to adopt resolution number 12436-100323, approving a tax incremental district affordable housing extension for the city of Oak Creek, TID number six.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And item nine is for the Department of Public Works and its consideration of a resolution approving the T-Mobile First Amendment to the lease agreement for the Howell Avenue Monopole lease. Looks like Mike's going to take it for us. I'm looking around, who's is this one?
So we've got a number of cell phone leases on water towers and associated facilities in town. This one happens to be on the Monopole, which is next to the Howell Avenue Water Tower. So if you see the Monopole that's sitting there with the cell antennas on it, that's leased provided by T-Mobile in today's date anyhow. They've been looking to upgrade that for quite some time. They were one of the lowest leases that we had, and we worked very hard at getting them to a more current value, and that's what you see here at sixty thousand four hundred, I think, or eight hundred, whatever the number is. And then that increases the accelerator on that is four percent a year, which is sort of high in the industry as well, so we're pretty happy with that. They are not our highest provider by any means, but we brought them significantly. The previous lease was, I think, around thirty-six or thirty-eight thousand, so it's a significant increase. They've also, this was previously done, yeah, the Sycamore Tower facility, T-Mobile there as well, and there's one more that they are looking to upgrade, and that would be the Orchard Way Reservoir.
Wonderful. Questions for Mike? Okay, seeing none, motion, please.
Kuzakowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12434-100323, a resolution approving the T-Mobile First Amendment to the Howell Avenue Monopole Tower lease.
Pritzl, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And item 10 will bring us to engineering and its consideration of a resolution accepting dedication of a public improvement and the release and to release the developer from the developmental agreement for the Ryan Business Park development. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, Matt Sullivan, City Engineer. Before you is the resolution to that, or accept the dedication of the public improvements and releasing the developer of its responsibilities under the development agreement. So the developer for that parcel or that development down on 13th Street and Highway 100, which facilitates Amazon, the improvements were in Bartell Court, Highway 100 and South 13th Street. All the improvements have been completed, accepted by all entities being the DOT, Milwaukee County, and the city of Oak Creek. This would release their rights and take on the responsibilities such. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions for Matt concerning Okay, seeing none, motion?
Yeah, most approved resolution 12435-100323, accepting dedication of the public improvements and releasing the developer from the development agreement for the Ryan Business Park Development.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is License Committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the items on tonight's common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? Okay. I rarely make comments about anything on here, but I am particularly intrigued by the wine, paint, and sip gathering, the number two there, so. Other than that, Kirkowski will make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the October 3rd, 2023 License Committee Report.
Pritzl, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 12 is our vendor summary report for September 27th, 2023, amount of one million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Please take a look, and if you have any questions, please take the floor. And when you're satisfied, there's no questions or discussion, motion?
Marshall will move to approve the September 27th, 2023 vendor summary report in the total of one million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Kuzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Wonderful. That will get us to adjournment tonight.
Pritzl, motion to adjourn?
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Great. Thank you and good night, everybody. Have a great week.